Hey, good afternoon. It's being 4 o'clock on April 1st, 2019. I call to order the Committee on City Services and the Northampton City Council. And who to call the roll, please? Laura?
Councilor Carney.
Present.
Councilor LaBarge.
Present.
Councilor Bidwell.
Here.
And Councilor Nash.
Here.
Thank you. And I'll note that this proceeding is being audio and video recorded. Seeing no public comment, we have today with us an update on the Building Department activity, permit volume. And I'll ask, please, to join us. Make your way to the table? No, if that's okay?
Sure.
Easier for the camera.
Yes.
And Lou Hasbrook, who is the Building Commissioner of the City of Northampton. Thank you.
Hi.
Hey. Welcome.
I'll turn over to you if you'd like to.
Okay, so I thought this was mostly about short-term rentals. And I did a sheet up on about what I know about short-term rentals. And it's confusing, probably the most confusing aspect of it is that there's any number of terms and definitions of what I think is generally getting referred to as short-term rentals. Some are more specific than others. Sometimes, you know, the numbers of allowable rental rooms varies, it seems, between three and five and six and beyond. Six or more switches to another level if you're talking about certain codes. And I think until we sit down, until the city sits down and figures out and decides, I think, what they're gonna regulate under this new statute, then we can figure, then the city can decide what regulations they want to bring to bear on it.
Yes, please. Thank you. Louis, I know, like, off on Ryan Road about a year and a half ago, we had an accessory apartment made for one of my residents for his mom and dad. The father has died, so say, as an example, the mother passes away, can they go ahead and use that as a rental?
Well, with something like that, if it was done as an accessory apartment, the owner of the property has to leave one or the other of the units.
Okay, so say, I'm the owner, and whatever, my parents have passed away, as long as I live there, I could rent that?
Yes. And the regulations that, my piece of the regulations, don't speak at all to a dwelling unit like that. If it's a single dwelling unit, whether it's a standalone single-family house or apartment, that's not, the building code regulations don't address that at all. I don't think the fire code regulations do. The short-term rental, the regulations that seem to relate to what we call short-term rentals are bed and breakfasts, renting a room in the house. One of the big factors is whether the occupancy is permanent or transient, and actually, it's transient or non-transient. You can rent a room in your house to somebody for a period longer than 30 days, and it's just, and it's no different from your child, your son or your daughter living in a room. I think that what they're, what the, most of the regulations focus on is short-term rentals. Other towns put a lot of, you know, have, other towns speak directly to single-family homes, vacation homes, when you get down near the shore. Some towns have real specific regulations about somebody who rents their house out for a week at a time, when they don't live there. Building code doesn't address that at all. I don't think fire code does either.
I'm talking with a resident in Ward 7. She told me that she was for what we're going to be doing, hopefully, with short-term rentals. And on her street, and she's a retired police officer, there is a house. And she said, sometimes people are there for a small period of time, and the house has never kept up, allowance has never kept up. And she was really hoping that there would be significant changes with the short-term rentals. So how do we handle something like that if the people are not here that own it, they live in another state, but they're doing short-term, but then they're renting longer, and then they go back to short-term, and are not taking care of their properties?
Well, I think the short-term rental, the aspect of short-term rentals that is gonna get addressed by the, because of the latest statute, is gonna be a general ordinance and not a zoning ordinance. I don't think zoning is gonna get involved in the financial part of it. How it does, how zoning does address it, I don't know. That, I think, remains to be seen. Right now, zoning requires that bed and breakfast, and they define, Northampton defines bed and breakfast as maximum of three rooms, and they require a special permit from...
Three or fewer rooms.
Three or fewer rooms.
Breakfast included, reserved in advance. Right. But then you can have four or more rooms are let, and that would be the bed and breakfast establishment?
See, there's, everybody has their own little bite of this apple. Licensing, licensing statute, the excise tax statute, the fire department, the fire statute, the fire...
The health code.
Code, and the building code, and then the zoning ordinance, and each has a different number of, you know, and, oh, and the health code, too. Each has a different, each has chosen a different number of rooms and a different name to call it, to rooming house, lodging house, bed and breakfast.
So, I just had a question.
Please, please, yeah.
So, is there, I got the impression that at some point, there was some effort between your department, fire, and health, public health, to try and, you know, come at it from a lot of different ways and see if there was one city approach that would merge as to regulation of short-term rentals? Is that...
It's, I think it's gonna start with the financial piece of it. And I think that that's what triggered the discussion about it. And the new statute, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty certain that the new statute says that places like Airbnb and other organizations that coordinate these rentals are gonna have to tell the municipalities who's registered with it.
Right.
And what the city does with that remains to be seen. As far as the building code's concerned, a building official can't go into an existing single-family home.
Right.
Just can't.
You mean without complaint?
Without...
Some other registered доминате?
Some reason to believe that there's a life safety issue.
So just a routine inspection could not be detected?
Not by, not by the building.
Right.
The fire department has, the fire department has more latitude. What the city could require as part of this registration process is not clear to me yet. And some towns have, I put a fair amount of time and energy into looking at what other towns are doing about it. And some towns use their fire department to inspect, but they're primarily focused on smoke and carbon dioxide detectors. If someone were to come to the building department and say, "I wanna turn my house into a bed and breakfast," we would say, as far as the building code's concerned, you need to put a sprinkler system.
Need to put what?
A sprinkler system in the house. And that's, that came from the most recent code.
For anybody that wants to turn their house into...
Into a bed and breakfast.
Or an Airbnb, even?
Well, there's no difference, Airbnb is just...
So any bed and breakfast needs to be sprinkled?
Any new bed and breakfast.
Oh, that isn't grandfathered at this point, right?
Right.
But, so if my, if my neighbor, when their daughter heads off to college, and decides that they wanna rent out that room through Airbnb...
Sprinkler their house?
In theory, if that'd be a new unit, they would be required a sprinkler. The house or sprinkler that room or...
No, the house. I mean, and it's pretty, it's pretty clear, but what's, because it's a change of use, because in the building code, they define, let me just find it, owner-occupied lodging houses with five or fewer guest rooms, a lodging house is one family dwelling, one or more occupants are primarily permanent in nature, which is, and which rent is paid for guest rooms, they define guest rooms. And it becomes a change of use from regular single-family home, and that change of use would trigger the requirements to put a sprinkler system in it.
Any change of use or just those shit?
This change of use with a single-family home would trigger that requirement.
Other, other changes of uses? Just to change, for example, a single family to a two-family would require a sprinkler?
It would have to go to a three-family.
Okay, a three-family.
Is in a different code, so it moves it out of the residential...
I see, and then you need a sprinkler.
Or there's, sometimes there's a way around it, too, that they call, and, so if you do X, Y, a three-family home would need a sprinkler system. But you might be able to avoid putting a sprinkler system in a three-family home that you created out of a two-family home if other safety, life-safety features were more than they needed to be.
And just to follow up on that, typical, and I'm talking ballpark, we're talking $100,000 for a three-family home for a sprinkler system?
No, I think less than that.
70? I mean, but it's expensive, I mean, it's...
I don't know.
I just know a couple of different places that needed sprinklers.
You know, 20,000.
Six figures.
You can, you could put a sprinkler system in a single-family home when you're building it for about $8,000 now.
Right.
The prices have gone down. But I think that most people are gonna just say that, "Oh, I've been renting rooms for a long time." And that's gonna be the way that people address it. I already, I already know that. Say, this is no change of use, so... I've heard that from other communities. Yeah?
That's so confusing.
Well, it is confusing.
It is. My question is...
The idea that there's not a, there's not a single definition that covers that each aspect of the statute, regulations or statutes that review, that apply should use, they should have some consistency, but they don't. So we're stuck with that.
So who monitors all this? As far as, her and I could own a house, we live in it, and we have, like, four bedrooms, but we have a dear friend that's coming in to live with us. Does that change right there? That, I mean, you're not taking rent from an individual, they've come in to stay with you, to live with you.
Well, I think rent is, rent is a big, is a very specific term. I think if you don't rent to somebody, no.
Okay. Please.
Yeah, so the thing, the sticking point is, Louie, you're referring to, like, bed and breakfast, like Craig DeLaPena's place out on the rail trail, they, they need to meet these types of regulations?
They're great.
But are you saying that if somebody does an Airbnb and rents out one bedroom for, that they, they need to put in a sprinkler system?
Well, that's what the building code says.
Okay.
I mean, it does, it does say that.
So right now, all of these Airbnbs that are currently operating are out of compliance?
Well, no, they're grandfathered, they're grandfathered.
They'll be grandfathered?
There's a grandfathering aspect of it.
Right.
If you, if you create...
Do it now!
If you built a house and said, "This is gonna be a B&amp;B," you'd have to put a sprinkler system in it. If you came and said, "I wanna make my house into a B&amp;B," you'd have to put a sprinkler system in it.
And that regulation is now in effect?
Right.
Too late?
So, yeah, so as of, what's the date that that regulation went into effect?
January 1st, 2018.
18?
2018.
Which one?
Which is when the, which is when the current building code became effective.
That's a very important piece of information right there.
But it also isn't altogether clear to me how well it's being enforced.
By whom?
By us. By people that...
But by which responsible party in the city?
Say again?
By which responsible party in the city?
No, I think more of statewide.
How statewide? But how, but still, there has to be a city oversight. Who would be responsible in the city to monitor that?
The building department.
Would be, okay.
One of the things that's gonna happen, one of the things that's coming out of this most recent stat, legislation, is that there's gonna be, the cities are gonna, cities and towns are gonna find out how many B&amp;Bs there are.
Right.
That's the biggest, the biggest thing, that's, that's gonna be the thing that starts, and then how people cope with it going forward is, is something that remains to be seen. I mean, I think that how, if somebody, if this, if the town or the city finds out that 123 Main Street in some town Massachusetts is a B&amp;B, they're gonna, they're gonna then have a discussion about, but if it's been a B&amp;B for a while, if it's an existing B&amp;B, just because they're now registering, it doesn't mean they have to put a sprinkler system in it. What is it gonna mean? That's the piece that, that I think is gonna, there's gonna be a lot of discussion about it. And because this is gonna be, the reports are gonna be about places that are already registered, this, I think there might be the presumption that they've already been B&amp;Bs. Otherwise, they wouldn't be registered with Airbnb or whichever other service they, they're registered with.
So, one of the things that Mr. DeLaPena was telling us about the difference between his service and the Airbnb services, that he's at, he's providing a lodging experience where they're preparing meals, that they have to have special dining and cleaning and all of this kind of stuff, and that the health inspector comes in, and there's all of that, whereas your typical Airbnb isn't providing, they might say, "There's coffee on the, here's a coffee pot," you know, who knows? Maybe they make pancakes and all sorts of stuff as an addition, but that, we don't, I think we, we haven't made that distinction here, although Mr. DeLaPena says that distinction's been made, and all of these other people are doing similar stuff, but they're flying, he called it, I think, flying under the radar or something.
Distinction made by whom? You said the distinction's been made by whom? What is it?
Well, we've already kind of made the distinction as to, here's what a B...
A B&amp;B is?
Well, I think we need to use the term bed and breakfast, and then B&amp;B. Because, I mean, most people think of the same thing, but bed and breakfast for us is everything that Mr. DeLaPena provides. B&amp;B is more like an Airbnb, which is you rent a room online...
Is that consistent, though, with our definition of...
I, no, I'm trying to think of it just so we can talk about it.
Oh, yeah. Getting curious, don't worry. Because I think there's many Airbnbs, like you said, that provide the similar services that Craig DeLaPena provided.
Right, but they're not meeting the regulations. That was part of what Craig's point is.
Which part of the regulations, so which part?
That to serve food, to serve breakfast in that lodging...
Serve safe certifications and those sorts of things.
And separate silverware and all of that kind of stuff.
Okay, I see.
So, part of this point is, I'm regulated.
I see.
And I'm meeting all of the requirements, and meanwhile, I'm competing against all of these other businesses that aren't meeting these regulations.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that's not a distinction without a difference, because depending on, I'm not sure where he believes that serving breakfast is any sort of requirement to, to be classified as a bed and breakfast.
Right.
Because, because there's, there's one set of criteria, and I'm gonna check to see which one it is. General Law 64, Mass. General Law Chapter 64G has, has the, refers to breakfast, but that's only the room excise tax statute. It's not the licensing statute, which is GL 140, which has, which is the one that differentiates between...
You're referring to the, to the distinction here between bed and breakfast establishment and bed and breakfast home?
Mm-hmm.
Right, which are defined in Mass. Chapter 64G? So, it sounds like the Craig DeLaPena establishment is a bed and breakfast establishment because four or more rooms are let, breakfast included, reserved in advance, and the difference is three or fewer, breakfast included, reserved in advance, that's a bed and breakfast home. But both of those are different than many of the already allowed Airbnb establishments that may or might, may or may not include breakfast?
Northampton zoning ordinance doesn't have, doesn't, doesn't...
Require breakfast?
Speak to breakfast at all.
Right.
And it's a...
I don't remember that.
It's a...
I think you could do a text search and knock them up with breakfast in the zoning department.
And then, and then, Northampton zoning limits a bed and breakfast to three, three rooms, six individuals. Three rooms with two people apiece. So what, how does four, how does a, a bed and breakfast, how does a place with four rooms to rent fit into the process?
Or a two-family, where the single owner lets out six of the rooms, the three rooms upstairs and the three rooms downstairs. I know people who do that in Boston, with a two-family home, live there still.
Or what about, what about a place where the owner doesn't live and it's, and it's rented?
Right, right.
It'd be simple to, it'd be nice, just, none of this existing, just start over and create something.
No, I think that, I think that, you know, because, because there's all these overlapping aspects of the regulation of whatever happens in, in the, in these, in these houses, you know, the city could, you know, be relatively arbitrary and choose definitions, you know, call, name them, define them, and then regulate them.
Can we do that in, oh, I'm sorry, can we do that in overlooking what the state regulations already have?
Well, I think the state regulations will then land on top of it, and the degree to which the state regulations land on top of it is...
There's the state regulation or the local regulation applying?
The most restrictive.
The most restrictive, okay, that's, okay. So it could then be the local, the local restrictive council? Thank you.
I know with Greg and also with Dee and John Clapp with the bed and breakfast, a big concern was the language of professional. That bothered them, professional. Dee also, and I've had many talks with her on her bed and breakfast, and she did explain also of the board of health coming in on a yearly basis, and how she has to separate after utensils, okay, that they use versus the people that come in to stay at that bed and breakfast. So there was concerns about the language of professional.
Somebody's gonna have to define it, you know, because...
Is that local or state?
I don't know.
Well, I think the professional piece is coming out of the most recent statute.
Yeah, it has a state on it, says professional.
Right. And you could, you know, what is, I don't under, I don't know, I'm not in a position to make these kind of, like I say, it's, it's, you know, distinctions without, essentially without a difference, I think.
Are you, are you suggesting that ultimately, we need a city ordinance that clarifies definitions, and that would then determine, under which regulations, different pieces apply?
That's how I would, you know, I think the place to start is for the city to take all that's out there currently, look at it, put it together, choose some, some, choose something that they can put a box around, and then go from there. I mean, the health regulations come from, you know, a set of overlapping regulations, the minimum standards for human habitation, which is one section of the health code, and then, and then serving, you know, the serving provisions, the food service aspects of the health code. And I don't know where the health department is at this point with that.
Would you recommend something like, I mean, not officially recommend, but would it make sense to have you and the health director or the planning department, you know, just come together in terms of seeing what would make sense in terms of common definitions?
We already had that meeting.
Yeah.
And we came away from it with the idea that we needed to go back to the office and figure out what it is we wanted to bring to the table. But it's gotta be, there has to be some, some reason to, to work on it, and, and we're gonna have to look at some kind of, you know, definition.
Do you think there's any way that we can help in that effort at all? I mean, we're certainly interested, if that helps in terms of passing that along, assuming...
I think it should come from the top down.
Okay.
And then, once, once, and then it becomes a, you know, it goes, it goes up and down the hill, but, but the idea that what are we gonna, what are we trying to accomplish? What do we wanna do with this? And then what, what are we gonna do to make this happen? You know? It's... Well, plus, at some point, we'll have benefit of this registry coming from the state. And we'll know what's, what's out there. If there's, you know, if there's 63 places that are registered, we go through and kind of take a look at what they are and what's, what are the ones that we care about, which ones not?
And it's big implications, too, for those folks who thought, you know, they might rent out a room or two, you know, knowing what that requires now in terms of investment with a sprinkler system and all the rest of that. I mean, that's an important, that really, I think, you know, could just be an eighth Hudson job, but I just know a couple that have cost us six figures. So...
So my thoughts are that in terms of us setting up a way to inventory these businesses, if it best mirrors what we have on record with the city in terms of the properties, because they're listed as, you know, property A is listed as a single-family home, property B is a two-family home, is that right? And then, and then on top of that, we're applying this Airbnb unit thing, because the way Airbnb is looking at this, these are all units, you know, and it's, they don't care whether it's, you know, the second unit in a, in an apartment building, or whether it's just somebody's bed, extra bedroom. And my guess is that it would be best that we went about it, worked it backwards from our records, rather than trying to figure out that Airbnb's gonna provide us. Because we're gonna, I think in the end, we'll get all of these potential, you know, well, here's all of the money that was earned by Airbnb in Northampton, and then we have to sort through, okay, how many of these people are exempt? And then we have to sort through, okay, how many of these people are exempt? Because then we have to figure out, you know, who has, you know, which of these Airbnb rentals is actually in, you know, the, the original unit which the family lives in or is in the accessory structure or is actually, you know, the third apartment that could be rented right now? So.
But we don't have, I mean, the city knows who's, the city could, we could dig out without, not, you know, with, with some effort, who's already, who has a special permit for bed and breakfast. Or alternatively, who got a special permit for bed and breakfast over, over time. If some, you know, people don't have to, if somebody moved and now it's not a B and B, we, we would know that. I think we need to see what comes from, you know, through the state and then apply that. And we can push that back into the information we already, we do have, which is, is it a single-family, two-family, a three-family?
So we should fly by the seat of our pants at that?
Well, I think we're gonna take what we get in terms of information, you know, the three hundred and twelve listings that come from Airbnb plus there's, I think, a couple others, services. And plow that back through and see what we come.
Right, you could just easily cross-check those three hundred and twelve that are in Northampton.
Well, I don't know easily, but.
Well, it might take three hundred and twelve hours, but.
Well, it would take, you know, what we'd have to do is, you know, create some kind of.
Cross-checking.
Relational data, probably a spreadsheet to begin with, to cross it over. And then, and then see what we have.
I still have concerns because I did hear one resident speak in regards to renting off some rooms, bedrooms, but making an office out of it. Don't you have to have a permit in order to run a business and, and run an office?
No, there's, the rights, the, the home businesses and home occupations split into two places, but a home, a home business is, is allowed by right. You know, until, I, I honestly can't remember what the things that trigger the requirement for a special permit, but it's pretty clearly spelled out and it got a lot more, it got more liberal about the two thousand fifteen. But no, you can have a, you could, you can have a therapist's office in your house as long as you stay within the constraints of the, of the ordinance without, without permit.
My big concern is who is going to monitor? Who is bed and breakfast, that's gonna be an easy one for me, okay? Looking up and so forth like that. But having these rooms and renting them off, somebody can just, they don't have to apply, they'll just do it. And this is what was said about from Dee Clapp and them, that people are doing it and they're not registered.
Well, people do an awful lot of things without, so much of it fairly well.
I think the history of people renting rooms out of their houses is long and long and long. I mean, I know the house I moved into twenty-five years ago was an older woman who rented out the rooms, the four other rooms in the house and four old gentlemen and, you know, I mean, it's, and they come from a long history of rooming houses. I mean, I think it's, there are certainly those that are licensed lodging houses and then there are those that are maybe under the radar, but people have been renting rooms in their houses for.
And that's my concern, how does this monitor? Who watches this?
But as soon as it's, as soon as someone stays for the thirty-first day, it's no longer transient housing. It's no longer short-term.
Then it's medium or it's not long-term, right?
Even as a roommate?
They just, they had to pick a day, they had to pick a, a number and thirty days is the number. And so, so transient housing and the difference, say, between a hotel motel and an apartment building is sort of establish that transient and non-transient occupancy. And transient occupancy is thirty days or less. Non-transient occupancy is some length of time longer.
Does that include the person who is on the lease for an apartment or takes on a roommate? Is that roommate then fall into that category? I mean, so, because we know that that happens all the time. So when you're renting out, you're on the lease and you have an extra room and so you take a roommate. Is that, is that also in the category of the, does that have to be regulated?
If it's, you know, in theory it would, it would fall under the lodging, house, rooming, house, bed and breakfast. If it was less than thirty days and if it's more than thirty days, then it's just another roommate.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, okay. Now I understand, it's not transient. Okay, so, so then that, that's a roommate and that doesn't put you in any category of renting out a room per se or other.
So during our discussions with the mayor around this topic, that he, there was something about ninety days? That ninety days is, that's when it becomes long-term?
Well, the, the, see, see, it's, some are defined, some aren't defined. The most explicit definition I can find comes out of the building code and it has to do with transient and non-transient. And it, it creates, it does a lot of, it defines a lot of aspects of the building code. And I think that other. You know, Northampton zoning uses the word transient. The, you know, the state, the building code uses in the commercial side of it transient, non-transient. In the residential side, it says primarily permanent. And then it also says guests. You know, so, I mean, I think the city's gotta sit down and decide what words they're gonna use and what criteria they're gonna use and then go from there. And I think that once the city gets from the state, the reports that come out of the Airbnb and other, and other, you know, booking sites, see what the, and we'll figure out what the situation is.
And if we have suggestions, should we send them to you, should, should send them to the mayor?
I think that we, I think start at the mayor's office because there, there, that's where.
It was kind of for the camera. Well, presumably down the road when there is some clarity about all this, to, to address the concern about expanding the requirement for inspections, which I know is a big concern, there's always so many personnel there. Could always be the option of asking folks to sign some affidavit, the way we do in other situations. This is council multitasking.
Somebody needs to the elevator.
Well, anyway. Well, I'd like to take this opportunity to just say some nice things. Louis, I wanna thank you for, you know, you've been really helpful in a lot of stuff that's come up in, in my ward. Lots of questions about stuff on property and property lines and you've been really helpful. And you've been really great with, when I pointed constituents your way, so, thank you.
Well, I like, I like working in Northampton and this is part, you know, part of it is that I think it works, it worked pretty well. There's a supportive aspect of it that you, I don't, I haven't seen in other towns.
And Tony, I also have worked with Tony Patillo for many, many years and you also in the office. And I wanna thank you for everything that you have done in the city and especially Ward Six. It's becoming busy again and I thank you for helping me, guiding me because it has not been easy. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. The report, I didn't bring a handout report on building permits, but, and we do, we keep track on a fiscal year basis, so we're, you know, we're two-thirds, I mean, three-quarters of the way through FY nineteen. We're on track for, you know, building permits took a big jump in, in FY fifteen and they've stayed consistently higher than they've been in the past, both raw numbers and then value of permits. We do see the value go up because there's, because of inflation, but, but just the numbers of permits that we're doing. And there have been, aside from Smith College, which the permits numbers go up and down depending on, I guess, what Darren Downman is doing. They consistently across the, we'll probably have another, aside from the apartments, we'll probably have another forty new single-family houses, which is something that hasn't, that just new single families took a drop in two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and they've come back up. Village Hill was nearly built out and now they've, now there's thirty more in, in one subset of the development that, that had eighty-five in it. I think the thing, one of the things that I was most excited about is the new, is the commercial, the new commercial building in Village Hill, nicely get more commercial up there. There's a mixed-use. There's another mixed-use building in the works. There's two significant solar arrays, one on Parkville Road and one in Wooler's gravel pit.
We have three in Ward Six.
Right, one of the, one of the people, the, the people doing one of those called me up and said, we're doing a, a small array. And I'm thinking, you know, you know, fifty panels and, and he said five megawatts, which is, I think, fifteen thousand.
Exactly, oh, yes.
And, but he's from Kansas and they have square miles of arrays out there. So, I think both of the new arrays are gonna have some battery storage associated with them, which is, and I'd be interested to see battery storage is now, pour the pads and these things, these battery packs come, you know, and drop and, you know, plug and play. They just plunk them down, bolt them down and then connect them. And one of them, the one that I have heard more about is gonna have about a third of the capacity of the array in storage, which is, you know, something, which is not insignificant. Lots and lots and lots of on, I don't have the number, but, you know, residential roof mount solars, four or five permits a week probably. So it's, even though the, some of the rebates have fallen off, it's still very popular.
Could we talk about the solar on the roofs and so forth like that? If you don't want them on your roof, would you like them on the ground?
Yeah, you could still, there's not much difference between what, there's an upper limit of what you can put on the ground without coming in for special permits. But usually, that, what you could put on the ground is usually more than you could fit on the roof unless you've got a really large house. So, and we don't see the root, the, the ground mount is predicated, the upper limit is predicated on what your onsite consumption is. If, if you had a heated driveway and heated swimming pool and, and a giant house, you could probably, you could have a larger ground mount solar array than if you had a small house. But still can get, even, even at the, even at the lower end, you can get a, a ground mount solar array that'll, that is larger than will fit on most roofs and will, you know, support, you know, provide a hundred percent of the electricity of a house.
Because I'm looking at going ground.
Yeah, it's, it's not much different than a, than a, than a shed. And there's a, there's actually a, a little bit of a loophole in the sense that if you build a shed and then put, like a big woodshed and then put solar on the roof, it could be more, it could be bigger than if, than a ground mount array could be. But only one time did I ever run into that.
That look forward.
I know. So what if you already have a shed? What if you already have a shed that's built?
You can put solar on that for sure, as long as it's sturdy enough.
He's just saying that it's the same dimensions as what being a shed, so you can put one next to it.
Are there any other questions folks have?
No, just, just good, good, good luck in sorting this through. This is, it's gonna rain, it's gonna, reminding us just how complicated it is and how many contradictory definitions there are. There's a lot of.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, I think that there's gonna be some, you know, I don't know, arbitrary, but gonna have to choose some of the, some criteria, real specific criteria. I mean, one of the things that, one of the things that's really important to me is to have a regulation be very specific, unambiguous, clearly defined, because that's what makes something enforceable.
And use an example, like what?
For example, you shall only have three rooms in the house with so many, you know, is that the kind of thing?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, pick how many rooms and does breakfast, does actually, you know, is.
What constitutes serving a meal and what constitutes breakfast?
And, I mean, in all that, that those little wrapped packages of six small donuts don't count as meal.
They have to come, they have to come from, they have to come from what's over here? The donut, glazed, only glazed donuts qualify.
Right, those are the kind of things that are going on. Because if, I mean, it's, it really is interesting how, as soon as there's some kind of regulation, there'll be somebody out there that wants to push it. And that, you know, recently, the, recently a zoning ordinance changed to, and I think you voted on it in February, that, that bathing facilities in an accessory building are, are not allowed. Because you start out with a toilet and then pretty soon it's a toilet with a wash.
And then it's a hot tub.
And then it's got a shower and, you know, and then.
But we let an eyewash, we're allowing him washing eyes.
How do you know this? How do, who monitors?
Well, we do, I mean, that's, you know, you have to get a permit.
But what if they don't?
Well, then.
Then it's complaint-based and if a neighbor goes like this and looks and sees you going naked.
It's just like working on with cars, right? Everything's complaint based. It's not, oh my God, it's really about whether a neighbor or somebody else files a complaint, right? It would be like working on vehicles on your property, putting them on the lawn and selling them, correct? And the complaints start. Somebody has to complain. It's not lose job to go.
Well, no, I mean, if you drive by and see a pile of, of, you know, things in the yard, somebody work, obviously doing work, will stop and look at it. That's, that's a piece that's pretty, pretty simple. I mean, there's, 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 there are roofers that won't take a roofing permit unless they think that they're on a street that people will drive by. You know, I mean, I think that that's, because, because if you do a lot of work, you know, the cost of the forty dollars per job for a roofing permit adds up. And, and sometimes we see them and, you know, stop, don't see the permit card in the window, call the office and ask if there is one, or sometimes the neighbors will complain. So, well, but, but renovating your, you know, the upstairs of your garage into a, into a living space is usually pretty obvious.
And you can do that with permits? Well, not without a permit. You can't do, what if I just said that?
And, and that what they've done is no, you can't make your garage into an apartment without, without it meeting the criteria for an apartment and.
Or an office, right?
Where you can, office is different from an apartment. You can do office work by, with a building permit, but it's allowed by right. But another, a whole nother apartment isn't.
I can't.
And so what makes an apartment? Well, kitchen facilities and bathing facilities. And so when they, when they changed the ordinance to prohibit bathing facilities as opposed to a toilet, it made, it made things easier for me.
Somebody isn't using that eye wash to cover their whole body.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Good luck with all this.
I think hopefully what I communicated is that it's very complicated.
Yes. Make sure it happens.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Want to know, I have to make a quick, my, my garage closes at five o'clock and I just might, might need to check and make sure my car's ready. But in the meantime, we have the minutes, so if you want to just take the minutes, I'll just check on those and then we can put one of those out of there. Just make sure I can pick up my car. Can I like a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move approval for Hart Fork second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move down to item five, which was referred to our committee for various committees. Disability Commission. I have met Jeremy, great guy, and I know Jeremy, you know him very well. And him and I had a lengthy talk on the phone and he did come to one of our city commission, commission on disability meetings. Very, very, very thorough, very helpful. So when we talked, he gave us, gave me exactly how he feels. He said that he is hoping that we consider him for the position on the Disability Commission. For forty-one years ago, he was born with a permanent disability, which is called Estio Genesis Imperfecta that left him wheelchair bound with fragile bones. Throughout his life, he's been in a wheelchair. He's observed how society is built around the needs of the able body and often looks the needs of the disabled. As he's grown up, he has increasingly realized that the only way to make positive changes is to stop being a mere observer and actually going out there and getting involved. He says, I've been waiting to play a more active role in improving the lives of disabled people in our community and I believe am a unique position to do so and I agree with that. In addition to graduating from college with a degree in communications, he's also been deeply involved in music for the past twenty years. He finally decided to speak out about snow removal issues in Northampton, for example, through word of mouth and social media. He was able to reach a wide audience and get an article written about it in the Gazette. He believes that if he is appointed to the commission, he will be able to continue to use his voice and his, and, and his local connections to speak to the community about the issues we are dealing with to gain awareness and support from as many people as possible for all the great work that the Disability Commission already does. He already believes that to have more support from the community and more people aware and encouraging of the commission's work would lift some burden off the shoulders of the commission and help us get even more accomplished. I have lived in Northampton for fifteen years. I have been riding my electric wheelchair all over town and experienced firsthand the accessibility issues at local businesses. The problem with snow removal in winter and I, I would like to do everything I can to make a long lasting improvement so that one day people will see Northampton as a community that is more aware of its disabled citizens' needs and is determined to help them meet those needs. So I have, I would like to make a motion for a positive recommendation to City Council.
I would like to second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to send the name Jeremy Dubs to fill a vacancy on the Disability Commission to the full City Council with a positive recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I hear no opposed or objections. That passes. Thank you. And Council of York?
Yes, I spoke last week with Ben Capistran, I think is how it sounds. He has been in Northampton for several years. He's on the Smith faculty. His fields of research and investigation and writing are very much in the areas of gerontology and demographics as they affect different aging issues. And I think what he is very much interested in doing is at some level seeing what the intersection is between his academic work and the real work of the Council on Aging. And I think that input is very much desired by, by the director and by the council. So it sounds like a good fit. So he looks forward to joining the Council on Aging. So I would look forward to motion, a positive recommendation for Ben Capistran for Council on Aging.
Okay, moved and seconded to send the name Ben Capistran to the positive recommendation to the Council on Aging to the full City Council with a positive recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think that's unanimous. And may I just say that both of these, I think, are excellent appointments. And lately I've been pretty excited about the caliber of appointments we get to all these committees. And just remind folks, we did, I'm not sure if it went to everyone, Laura, but that little conversation between court and.
Right about the annual.
Yeah, and I.
You finally said it to us.
Uh-uh, did you folks, so it's basically you saying that there may be fifty-three appointments that come, could come to us.
There weren't that many last year.
Right, but there may be, that was good thinking. We had to think in advance because with the possibility of fifty-three that might come to us before the end of June.
That's how many are expiring June thirtieth, two thousand nine?
Thirty, yeah, yeah.
Maybe how many?
Fifty-three. Well, that's like, so if we look at that, that's like twelve apiece, thirteen apiece?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which isn't too bad if you think about.
Yes, we started it out over a few months.
Right, right. If the sooner they can get us those names, I mean, that's one thing we could do. If we could get all those names in advance, we could know in over the next April, May, twelve weeks, you know, ten weeks.
Yeah.
If we knew we had thirteen people, you know, if we had a list in advance about what those were, it would help us to plan ahead so that even if we end up having to take up all fifty-three at the same meeting, we will have had time to. But we can, that's what I'm saying, at my, I mean, that's going to be a two hour meeting if there are two minutes discussion per, per person, whatever. I mean, it's doable.
Right, right.
But.
I think what he said was that sometime after the budget process is concluded, that's when the mayor's office begins the process of reaching out to these people
I see.
To see if they're interested in.
Okay, so we're not going to see anything before.
So you would get a list, but you wouldn't know if all of those people are going interested in reappointments.
Okay, but what we could at least do with that list, right, is we know that in ninety-nine percent, you know, cases, people are recommended by the mayor's office for reappointment. And, and probably eighty-five percent of those people are going to still serve. So it would just give us, I mean, the sooner they could at least get us the list of those expiring, we'd have just an easier, you know, because otherwise we're going to be left with having to make fifty-three calls or, you know.
Right.
You know, even if it's fifteen calls apiece, it's following up on all those in a matter of two, three weeks or something could be, could be challenging.
You could definitely ask court for that list, whether people will be definitive until later.
Right, knowing that, we could at least know.
Maybe it's give me a timeframe too, like when he thinks they're going to begin contacting them or.
Right, and we can identify people we already know on the list and, you know, be easy call, you know, those sorts of things.
So the, the only glitch in that, I think it's a great idea, is that the mayor, mayor's office may have names on that list that maybe they want people to expire and they have other candidates in mind and.
Well, that's why we can't call them yet until they, you know, but if it's clear to us that there's some of those that, you know, I mean, it's true that there may be people that are, and they, they know that they won't reappoint.
Right.
It, it would be helpful if they know that now, they could kind of let us know to stay away from, you know.
That would be a good email to send out now. Do you want to be reappointed?
But it's also, it's also in the mayor's prerogative to appoint or reappoint too, so there may be something in their office that.
And reappointments are easier than.
Replace or whatever.
Well, in theory, the communication should be between the mayor and the committee board chair.
Right.
It's not so much asking an individual member, do you want to be reappointed? It's asking the chair of the committee.
But they still need to ask the individual as well.
True, but the first call should be the board chair.
Well, I mean, they could.
Because every once in a while it says, you know, this guy has been showing up a while. I want him reappointed.
Right, there could be, apparently that's done with every reappointment. What I've been told is that the mayor's office does check, but maybe that's, you know, not been a consistent practice. At any rate, we're looking at what we're facing, which is the fifty-three by the end of June. We could add a layer by requiring another call to the, oh, we could make those calls. We could make all those calls to the, because I don't think we're going to get that level of assurance. We might, you know, but it's going to be, it's going to be, and we're talking about, we're talking about probably the May meeting and the June meeting. And I would think the July meeting, because they won't have them, they won't have gotten them all together. And usually our July meeting, we end up having to, you know, it's right around four, just the first Monday, so.
I don't think you would have had too many, it's not much.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible we could meet, you know, five meetings in a row in June, you know, five days or whatever. I mean, it's, we can always add more meetings if we need to. It's harder for me. I'm, I'm actually facing kind of challenges for a lot of driving back and forth.
Right.
So at any rate, we'll keep that in mind. And so Council.
Well.
Yeah, and just for future, oh, on that topic?
Yeah, just one more thing. I, I think it would be helpful for us to really get this done before June thirtieth.
I agree.
Because then mostly would, then contacting people throughout the summer becomes more difficult. So I think that if, you know, our, our push is to meet and get our recommendations done, even if they wait till that next council meeting, you know, that first council meeting in July, that might even be okay. But just in terms of us tracking people down.
But what we know.
I remember last year trying to call people while I'm on vacation, while they're on vacation.
I agree with that. But what we know is that fifty-three people expire June thirtieth. So ideally, they would be reappointed before their expiration.
Right.
So it's possible that they're going to do all, they're going to have them expire and then have us after the fact to try to confirm a, you know, a reappointment. But, you know, we could, all we can do is put it out there that if the sooner that they get us any of those names, the sooner we can at least evaluate them and understand. But one thing we could do is at least, even though we know we can't make the calls until the mayor actually makes the reappointment, we can't actually make those calls to people. But if at least we have a sense, we can identify people we know, we can do that part of the work. So that would help. I mean, they might be reluctant to give it to us, knowing that they won't make their decision until after budget, but we can ask.
It'd be available on the website somewhere for all I know.
Oh, yeah, actually, you know, I mean, if it, it's still, but they, if they were able to identify to you that there were fifty-three people, then they know their names. So it would be helpful to us to have that information. Okay, and then Council of York had recommended. Steve Connors and the Veterans Council to come in for our next meeting, which is really critical because we have not had them come in and talk about the Memorial Day Parade and the other functions coming up and so forth. Good timing.
Yeah, agreeable.
That sounds great.
If he's willing to come, that, that's a good next step for May.
I know, like, how many people want to come?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he will want to come. He likes, and, and he usually brings a good entourage. So we can plan that for May and then we don't know what'll happen at the next, what, the April fourth and then the April eighteenth meetings in terms of appointments. But we can figure that for our May meeting, we may likely get a bunch on fourth and a bunch on, I haven't seen them in the preliminary. You didn't see anything in the preliminary?
No, so you should get it to me like Tuesday at like eleven fifty-five.
Yeah, yeah, so tomorrow, then maybe, who knows? But that's what happens is if we keep, well, see in the next series of, the next six meetings, there'll likely be a bunch. I think we could work something out. Yeah. I mean, just like with Paul Spector and us, I mean, we had quite a bit of interviews and we, our committee was strictly interviewing. Well, their, their committee was only appointments. That was the name of their committee. All they did was appointments. So the thing, the other thing they could do is even though we know that there may be issues they're not sure about, they're not sure about twenty percent of them, it wouldn't take much to review that list and send us the, the names of the people they're sure that they would like to have reappointed.
How would they know?
Well, because they can look over and they can say, this person's been here and they, you know what I mean? There, there's probably, there's probably a whole bunch of them that they know that they want, that they want.
Right.
And if they know that they want.
Give us a head start.
Yeah, I mean, it, it just leaves up, it would just, I'm asking, it, it's not inappropriate for us, for us to ask, given there'll be so many in a short period of time. Plus the fact is like some of them even who are being reinstated, okay, reappointed, I need to go in again. They've already been accepted by the mayor and then now they're going to be interviewed. Right. Right. So the sooner we know, the better anyway. And anything they can do to help would be great. I know. I agree. Thank you, Laura. Anything else?
Where, make sure.
A motion.
I would move to adjourn.
And we've been seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.